Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember McAdams.
Here.
Councilmember Vialla.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fisher.
Here.
Mayor Delgado.
Thank you. City manager, do we, city attorney.
It's okay.
Do we have any changes to the closed session agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. There are no changes to the closed session agenda.
Okay, then we'll open that up to public comments for people here in the room or on Zoom. Seeing none, we'll close public comments and we'll go into closed session where we convene in this room at 6:30. Thank you.
Recording in progress.
We'll give another moment for Councilman McAdams and our city attorney to get here.
Before we get into anything serious or substantive, but I'd like to welcome everyone to our September 16th,
Marina City Council regular meeting. Sorry we're late. We had a closed session as always. And sometimes that does run late. And our city attorney will be here in a moment to summarize that.
So while we're waiting, our city, our assistant high school principal Kyle Van Zant is going to do a song and dance for us. Kyle, come on up.
Kyle went with us to Japan on an eight day trip to our sister's, our friendship city, Izuno Kuni, Japan. And we'll be hearing from Yuzuki, a Japanese teacher in that city in a little bit. So here is Renee, our city attorney, and he's here to start off summarizing our closed session for us. Thank you, Renee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have just two quick things. On September 9th, the city council held a closed session and provided direction but took no reportable action. And then today, council held closed session and council provided direction, but there were no reportable actions. Thank you.
All right. So now we'll go to a Pledge of Allegiance after a moment of silence. So please everyone stand. And Kyle, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be great.
Seven seconds.
Okay Kendra Howell has done an amazing job with the Blue Zones Project Monterey County, and she's here to give us a special presentation. Thank you Kendra.
Some items here. And I'm also really thrilled to be here with my colleague. And Cindy, do you want to introduce yourself?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cindy Ruiz. I am the Director of Community Programs and Marketing.
And again, I'm Kendra Howell. I have the pleasure of working for Salinas Valley Health. But more importantly, I've been on the Blue Zone Project for the last six and a half years as one of the policy leads. So it is really our great pleasure to be here tonight for this important milestone for the city of Marina. We'll be presenting you with the Blue Zones Community Certification for your city. So what began as a readiness assessment in Salinas has grown into a powerful county-wide movement. Since launching in Salinas in 2019, the Blue Zones Project expanded throughout Monterey County in 2020. And now the county and five other communities, including Marina, have achieved Certified Blue Zones Community Designation. We also acknowledge that the whole program was made possible by the support of Salinas Valley Health, Taylor Farms, and Montage Health. And they actually, we did a readiness assessment in Salinas back in 2018. So it's been several years of really great work. So since beginning your journey in, since beginning your journey in 2020, Marina has been a role model for engagement by city leadership, staff, business owners, and residents. You embrace the project and you saw how it aligned not only with projects you have planned for the city, you also saw how it can continue your commitment to a vibrant and healthy community. I had the pleasure of going to the chamber luncheon on Friday and heard you speak about the incredible plans for the city. And I think one of the joys of this project is we've all had a chance to work with municipalities across the county. And I tell you what's happening in Marina is phenomenal. And what you've already done and your plans going forward. And we're really excited about the work you've done here for Blue Zones and look forward to seeing that continue because now you really own this project. I would also like to acknowledge Tanya Ruse, who was our former Blue Zone Project Community Programs Director, who was really there with you from the beginning as well to support you along the way, notably in the policy sector for food systems, built environment, and tobacco control. Marina exceeded their goals across all sectors for your certification measurement. And I was just chatting with Councilmember McCarthy, just as he came in and reminiscing about the great work the city did with the tobacco control measures, and really leading the way for other cities to follow suit, the beautiful work at Lockpadden Park. I remember with City Manager Long, the first visit with Dan Burden from Blue Zones National, and that was like three weeks before COVID hit. So we got that site visit in person, which was wonderful. And again, you just embraced it and we really appreciate that. I think Cindy wanted to have a few comments as well.
Thank you Kendra. And yes, I wanted to continue sharing some of the incredible accomplishments that have taken place here in Marina. We have been a part of over 100 events in Marina, which is incredible over the past few years, including Community Volunteer Days. We've been a part of MLK Day, Service Days, Gardening Days, National Night Out, and we've engaged with over 1,300 individuals in the community, which is incredible. We've also had the pleasure of approving two restaurants in Marina, Aki Fresh Mex and Cafe Mia. We have three work sites, City of Marina, Doctors on Duty in Marina.
Recording in progress.
We'll give another moment for Councilman McAdams and our city attorney to get here. Before we get into anything serious or substantive, but I'd like to welcome everyone to our September 16th, 2025 Marina City Council regular meeting. Sorry we're late. We had a closed session as always. And sometimes that does run late and our city attorney will be here in a moment to summarize that. So while we're waiting, our city, our assistant high school principal Kyle Van Zant is going to do a song and dance for us. Kyle, come on up. Kyle went with us to Japan on an eight day trip to our sisters, our friendship city Izuno Kuni, Japan. And we'll be hearing from Yuzuki, a Japanese teacher in that city in a little bit. So here is Renee, our city attorney, and he's here to start off summarizing our closed session for us. Thank you, Renee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have just two quick things. On September 9th, the city council held a closed session and provided direction but took no reportable action. And then today, council held closed session and council provided direction, but there were no reportable actions. Thank you.
All right. So now we'll go to a pledge of allegiance after a moment of silence. So please, everyone stand. And Kyle, if you could lead us in the pledge of allegiance, that would be great. Seven seconds. Thank you for being good support, Kyle. Okay, Kendra Howell has done an amazing job with the Blue Zones Project Monterey County, and she's here to give us a special presentation. Thank you, Kendra.
Some items here, and I'm also really thrilled to be here with my colleague. And Cindy, do you want to introduce yourself?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cindy Ruiz. I am the Director of Community Programs and Marketing.
And again, I'm Kendra Howell. I have the pleasure of working for Salinas Valley Health. But more importantly, I've been on the Blue Zone Project for the last six and a half years as one of the policy leads. So it is really our great pleasure to be here tonight for this important milestone for the city of Marina. We'll be presenting you with the Blue Zones Community Certification for your city. So what began as a readiness assessment in Salinas has grown into a powerful countywide movement. Since launching in Salinas in 2019, the Blue Zones Project expanded throughout Monterey County in 2020. And now the county and five other communities, including Marina, have achieved certified Blue Zones Community Designation. We also acknowledge that the whole program was made possible by the support of Salinas Valley Health, Taylor Farms, and Montage Health. And they actually, we did a readiness assessment in Salinas back in 2018. So it's been several years of really great work. So since beginning your journey in since beginning your journey in 2020, Marina has been a role model for engagement by city leadership, staff, business owners, and residents. You embrace the project and you saw how it aligned not only with projects you have planned for the city. You also saw how can continue your commitment to a vibrant and healthy community. I had the pleasure of going to the chamber luncheon on Friday and heard you speak about the incredible plans for the city. And I think one of the joys of this project is we've all had a chance to work with municipalities across the county. And I tell you what's happening in Marina is phenomenal and what you've already done and your plans going forward. And we're really excited about the work you've done here for Blue Zones and look forward to seeing that continue because now you really own this project. I would also like to acknowledge Tanya Ruse, who was our former Blue Zone Project Community Programs Director, who was really there with you from the beginning as well to support you along the way, notably in the policy sector for food systems, built environment, and tobacco control. Marina exceeded their goals across all sectors for your certification measurement. And I was just chatting with Councilmember McCarthy, just as he came in and reminiscing about the great work the city did with the tobacco control measures and really leading the way for other cities to follow suit. The beautiful work at Lockpad and Park. I remember with City Manager Long, the first visit with Dan Burden from Blue Zones National, and that was like three weeks before COVID hit. So we got that that site visit in in person, which was wonderful. And again, you just embraced it, and we really appreciate that. I think Cindy wanted to have a few comments as well.
Thank you, Kendra. And yes, I wanted to continue sharing some of the incredible accomplishments that have taken place here in Marina. We have been a part of over 100 events in Marina, which is incredible over the past few years, including community volunteer days. We've been a part of MLK Day, service days, gardening days, National Night Out, and we've engaged with over 1,300 individuals in the community, which is incredible. We've also had the pleasure of approving two restaurants in Marina, Aki Fresh Mex and Coffee Mia. We have three work sites, City of Marina, Doctors on Duty in Marina Coast Water District, one recognized organization, Monterey Bay Moves, two grocery stores, El Rancho Market and Grocery Outlet, and four schools, Ione Olson Elementary, Los Arboles Middle School, Marina High School, and Marina Vista. So it's really incredible work.
And the most important thing is Blue Zones doesn't go away after this. We move into sustainability and we'll be communicating with you on how we'll support your efforts going forward. We have our Monterey County Blue Zones Journey Book that we'd like to give each of you. So you'll see a lot of Marina successes highlighted, and we have a lovely certificate and our photo opportunity here. We'd love to get a group picture, but really achieving this certification, it takes time, commitment, and passion. And so we're really honored to officially present this recognition to the city of Marina. Thank you. All right, let's take that photo. Oh, yes, I'm sorry too. We also have, we had a celebration a couple of weeks ago and the mayor was there, and I think you left early. We have a lovely certificate from Supervisor Askew for you for all of your good effort. And then if you wouldn't mind helping pass along, we have one for Citizens for Sustainable Marina as well. Happy to take any questions or comments, but really we would love to just, you know. No, I mean, he wants to get a photo.
Yeah, Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you so much for this work. I remember, gosh, I think Aki Fresh was maybe one of the first restaurants to be Blue Zone certified and also is a great woman owned restaurant. So there's definitely a lot to celebrate there. I am familiar. I might mess up the name. The Walking Moise.
Moise.
Moise. So I see them in the community. I've seen some in Ryan Ranch. I've seen some in Marina. I see some in Salinas. I also see on social media the groups in South County. And so, you know, what a fantastic and positive impact you're having on our communities to make sure that we're healthy for generations to come. So thank you so much for this work.
Thank you, Kathy. Councilmember Biala. Okay. Kendra, what you and everyone at Blue Zones Project Monterey County, including Tanya Ruse and Cindy and everybody, it's just been amazing for our city. You helped recruit lots of volunteers. You mentioned 1,300. That's a, that's a, that's a big number of volunteers. It doesn't come easily, and you've done that throughout the county. You've been working with every community and the county. And so Blue Zones, in my experience, hit the county like a wave and accomplished a lot. And I think that it'll be a long time that we see the benefits of what you've, what you've started here. It took 10 years. You've worked, you've been here for 10 years doing this. That's a long time. And that was the original vision was to be here for 10 years and then let the communities take it from there. And I don't know that we'll do as well without you, but we sure appreciate you spearheading all the accomplishments that we have accomplished in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Well, congratulations to you.
It's great. Okay, we'll take that photo now.
We have this for you to hold, and then this is for you to keep.
Okay, a fact to follow, but it's going to be a really sweet next presentation regarding our Friendship City, Sister City collaboration with Izuno Kuni, Japan. And we welcome Yuzuki Yamashita from Izuno Kuni, and Kathy Biala, our councilwoman, is going to read us through a proclamation. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to read our proclamation and Yuzuki-san, could you stand up so everybody could see you? This is Yuzuki Yamashita from Izuno Kuni. So I want to read the proclamation. It's the Friendship City with Izuno Kuni, Japan. Welcome to Yuzuki Yamashita. Whereas the Marina Cities Sister City Program was established by city council approval on June 6, 2023, creating a Friendship City partnership between the city of Marina and city of Izuno Kuni, Japan. And whereas in July 2024, Izuno Kuni sent a delegation, including their mayor, Masasun, to visit Marina, followed by a reciprocal visit of Marina delegation to Izuno Kuni in March 2025. And whereas two successful academic years of a Zoom student exchange program have been completed with six Japanese and six American high school students participating each year, and a third program is beginning for this 2025-26 academic year. And whereas during Marina's official delegation visit to Izuno Kuni in March 2025, Nagaoka Junior High School graciously hosted our delegation with 120 students of their total 338 enrolled students, performing the song Best Friends, teaching us origami and Japanese calligraphy, and sharing a school lunch in their classrooms, creating a once in a lifetime cultural experience. And whereas part of this Friendship City relationship, Ms. Yuzuki Yamashita, schoolteacher at Nagaoka Junior High School, has been sponsored by Shizuoka Prefecture and 27 supporting companies and organizations to visit Marina, where she will observe our educational system at all levels of Marina schools and learn about the diversity of American culture. And whereas the city of Marina wholeheartedly welcomes Ms. Yamashita as part of our continuing effort to fulfill the mission of the Marina Sister City Program, promoting citizen diplomacy and exchanges in arts and culture, youth and education, business and trade, and community development as a means to foster peace and prosperity worldwide. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Marina, Mayor Bruce Delgado, and all council members warmly welcome Ms. Yuzuki Yamashita and affirms our commitment to the lasting friendship between the city of Marina and the city of Izuno Kuni dated the 16th day of September 2025. So we want to so now do you want to have comments or you want to first?
Let's open it up for any comments people may have. Mayor Protem Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome to our council chambers, Yuzuki. Just to explain, Yuzuki is staying in our home. We are the lucky ones who have the most time with her. She's on a busy schedule. It's not just Kathy's schedule. She really likes to do as much as Kathy always does. She just went sailing this afternoon before we knew that she was supposed to be at a 5:00 PM dinner, but you made it on time. Anyway, we're just delighted to have you here and to see how enthusiastic you are, how well you speak English. We're laughing because we're communicating in a language. It's not ours and it's not hers. So she might go home with a Dutch accent. No, it's wonderful having you here and to see how, so she visits the schools every day. She visits one of the five schools here, Marina. And our assistant principal from the high school, Kyle Vincent, has made a nice schedule for her. So thank you for coordinating all that. Your mother-in-law cooked today to provide dinner today from your mother-in-law. Anyway, it's a delight. So thank you for being here. And I hope that more people will come here and more people from our city will visit Izuno Kuni in the future. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Let's go to Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I so enjoy seeing the cherry tree that is planted out front that was purchased by our sister city. Since that was planted, I did some research and I'm learning that not only is the cherry tree not native to California, but it turns out it's actually not even native to Japan, as I understand. But why that's important is that we have a similar tree called the Monterey Cypress. It's such a powerful symbol of this region. And it turns out that it grows well throughout the world. It goes, you know, it grows in Australia and even in Asia. In fact, there's some cultivars that are in Asia currently that are used as like ornamentals. It would be my hope that at some point we can return the favor with some symbol of this region to our sister city that will grow and thrive and prosper in your region so that we can, you can enjoy what we enjoy here. So thank you for being here and thank you for that tree that has just become such a great symbol in our city.
Thank you, Brian. Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to quickly thank my colleague, Councilmember Biala, for your work and dedication on this. And it's just, it's a lovely program and especially, you know, with the high school kids, like what an experience. So, and thank you so much for making the trip here. Welcome. I hope you enjoy your stay and thank you for for representing and being an ambassador for our sister city. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Jenny. Councilmember Biala?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want, we're going to have a huge photo op, okay? I'd like not just our council, but also our city manager has been so involved in our Sister City program and Renee has reviewed all the legal documents for us. But I also want to welcome all of the ACOM people who are here today to come up and get your pictures taken with our Sister City representative. And Kyle Van Sant, who has been really the driver for the Zoom Student Exchange Program that I spoke of. So he has been the facilitator of the meetings and it's just been a lovely, lovely program. So someday we want to get the students actually here and vice versa, but you know, that takes a lot of coordination. And then I also want to welcome to stand in the picture is initially when we started the Sister City Program, we had community representatives in a subcommittee to look at the choices of Sister Cities. And so I know here today we have Laura Hoover, who was part of it, Joy Pasadia, and Young Su. Oh, they were part of the original group. So I'd also like you to be up here. And those who went to Izuno Kuni as the official delegation, it was Doug and Belinda back there came, and I don't know who else.
Randy was gonna come, but he's allergic to fish.
So the people on our staff, yes, please come up and get your pictures taken as well.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. I want to give a special thank you to Julius and Elizabeth Fisher, our Mayor Protem, for giving Yuzuki a place to live this week and taking her around, even including sailing on their boat today. Of course, I want to thank Kathy, as did Councilmember McAdams. Kathy is the driver between, behind the Sister City with Namwon Korea and Friendship City with Izuno Kuni, Japan. And she is the driver behind the delegations, whether they're coming from Japan to here or Korea to here, or going from here to Korea, or from here to Japan. It was Kathy that was driving all the details, all the scheduling, all the thinking and planning. And she did that this week again with Elizabeth's help. The two of them were a dynamic duo and along with Kyle to plan Yuzuki's trip. So Yuzuki is just one person, but she is supported by a whole organization, a network of supporters who wanted her to come here to represent Izuno Kuni in Marina. And so thank you to everyone in Japan who helps finance your trip and support you. And thank you to everyone in Marina who's made your trip be worthy of your, your time. And I want to thank you for your initiative that you took to, to request to come here so that we could, we could rally around you to help you come here. But if you wouldn't have taken the initiative, your trip wouldn't have happened. It was about you saying, I want to go to celebrate our Sister City or Friendship City, and I want to, to visit Marina, and I want next to come back with students from Japan. It's a beautiful thing. And the last thing I want to say is thank you to the Monterey Peninsula Unified School District. They're now teaching Japanese in our middle school and our high school with a Japanese teacher. And Kyle, as Kathy has said, has been instrumental in working with Kathy to do this exchange between students now for two years between Izuno Kuni high school students and Marina High School students. When we went to Izuno Kuni, their middle school, we weren't aware of how big a deal Marina was at their middle school. We were aware of the high school exchange. But we went to the high school, on the walls of their, of their school and inside the library, they had a showcase of information about Marina and pictures of Marina and postcards that were writing between our students and their students about our two cities. It was really wonderful to see that at the junior high school level. So thank you to MPUSD and especially Kyle Van Zant for orchestrating all of this with Kathy's incredible support and leadership. Okay, so now we can take that, but let's get a last word to Kathy.
Yeah, I just wanted to also, I forgot that on the official delegation, we had our people from our Marina City staff, but we also had ACOM people there. And I'm just looking in the audience, you went to Japan and Mary? Oh, you didn't, you went to Namwon. I'm sorry. So Mary went to Japan and Jiwa and Young Su there went and I see anyone else? That's it from there. And of course, the city council folks, Bruce and I and Elizabeth. And so we had a wonderful delegation going to Izuno Kuni. And I have to say that when you see 120 approximately young students in their uniforms singing this incredible song called Best Friends that I mentioned, I almost cried. I mean, they were doing that for us. They learned it for us. It was, it was just so touching. So you did a tremendous cultural exchange for all of us. So thank you. Okay, so should we go? Okay. Did I mention, please don't be bashful. Let's take a picture with Yuzuki-san.
Now we'll move on to council and staff announcements. McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I wanted to take a moment to recognize National Hispanic American Heritage Month, which is celebrated from September 15th through October 15th. This is a time to honor the history, culture, and countless contributions of Hispanic
This is a time to honor the history, culture, and countless contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans, whose traditions and leadership enrich our community every day. We are grateful for the vibrancy, diversity, and spirit they bring to our city and happy Hispanic Heritage Month. Also, the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and I, we attended the ribbon cutting of the new $12 million multi-use sports stadium at Marina High School. It was a lovely and very celebratory evening. The project was funded through Measure I, which was a $213 million facilities bond passed by the voters in 2018. So thank you voters for supporting our schools and our students present and future.
Thank you. Go to Councilmember Biala.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to jointly announce if we can get the on Saturdays, coming Saturday, at Vince Di Maggio Park, we have the multi, the city of Marina's multicultural festival. It's an annual event now and it's from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And the parking will be at the courthouse or across the street in the library and also the Vince Di Maggio Park. And the park. So we hope all of you come. We will have fantastic dancers and performers and food. So please do come. It's a fabulous event. And I wish somebody from recreation was here because they Andrea or whatever they aren't here. Okay. Oh, she's out of time. Okay. All right. So this Saturday, please all join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Mayor Pro Tem Fisher?
Thank you. So on Saturday, October. Okay, I need to notice. I want to say there's Cars in the Park.
October 11th. October 11th, eight to four.
11, that is it. Thank you. What time?
Eight to four.
Eight to four, same park, Vince Di Maggio Park. Like I said, every square inch of that park will be covered with cool cars. So it's not a city event, but it's in our city. I highly recommend visiting. And then one week later, that date, I know, Saturday, October 18th, we'll be celebrating the city's 50th anniversary. Big party downtown from noon till 5:00 PM. Vista del Camino will be closed off. There will be food trucks, beer and wine garden, jump houses, bands, music. It will be fun and some booth. And so noon to five downtown Marina. Saturday, October 18th. And everybody is, of course, more than welcome. Parking might be a little bit tricky. Just find parking at the courthouse or any of the parking spaces or call my bicycle. There will be bicycle parking right at the event. And that will, from now on, there will be every event bicyclists will get preference. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. It's always nice to ride a bike up to a very congested event and go right to the front and walk right in. Thank you to the city staff for those events that Elizabeth just mentioned, being September 20th Multicultural Festival and October 18th 50th Anniversary. They don't happen in a vacuum. Staff works very hard, planning, organizing, and putting them on and cleaning up after. And it's not just the recreation staff, though they're the lead. They often get helped by Tori or Belinda or other people to do the, all the things that are involved in running an event. So thank you to city staff and those community volunteers helping with those events. Thank you to the Marina Rotary Foundation for putting on the Cars in the Park Car Show on October 11th. I want to send out a thank you shout out to Sustainable Marina, who this last Sunday picked up approximately 150 pounds of litter and some very large bulky items north of town, just inside the city limits and then north of the city limits going out toward the landfill. And the next events are October 12th and November 9th. Those are every second Sunday of the month, each month, we do once. So that's October 12th, November 9th, meet at the southern junction of Lapis Road and Del Monte Boulevard. We always have a really good lunch provided for free to volunteers at 12:15 and we wrap up at 12:30. So that's October 12th, November 9th. And then every Thursday, including this week, Sustainable Marina volunteers go to Hilltop Park, a new city park. And rain or shine, 52 weeks out of the year, they are there on Thursday evening, pulling weeds, watering local Marina native wildflowers and planting plants. So I want to thank Sustainable Marina for that and encourage the public to volunteer because it's not just our Man of the Year, Steve Lee for Marina that has to do it by himself, although sometimes he is out there by himself. And in segueing there, I want to say thank you to Val Jensen, who is our Marina Woman of the Year and to Steve Lee, who's in the back there. Raise your hand, Steve. See his crown? He's the guy with the crown on back there. He's the subject of the king and his reign begins, he promises it'll be a benevolent and humble reign for the next year as Marina's Man of the Year. But seriously, he and Val were awarded that award of Women and Man of the Year because they have done so much for our community, much of which behind the scenes. But somebody ratted them out so they could get that award and it was well deserved. So thank you, Steve, for being Man of the Year and all it takes to get that award. We really appreciate your service to the city of Marina. Okay. Let's go now to Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real briefly, the state legislature just wrapped up a pretty busy legislative session. I received an email today from Cal Cities recommending that cities send letters of either support or veto request to the governor for some, a couple of things that we've already sent letters of opposition in the past. And so I would encourage city staff to take advantage of that. And for that matter, any council member that wishes to do so as well, in particular, the transit oriented design, I forget the bill number, but would allow transit agencies to build other than transit on land that they own, which I think is problematic for the city of Marina. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And our city manager and may perhaps other staff also have announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of special city council study meetings coming up next Tuesday. We have a study meeting and we'll be discussing our funding alternatives and strategies and options for constructing new city facilities. That'll be at six o'clock next Tuesday. And the following Tuesday on September 30th, we have another special study meeting. And that will be discussing the city council adopted policy in 2010 regarding marketplace rents for Preston and Abrams Park. That'll be six o'clock also.
All right. Thank you. Two important meetings, very important meetings coming up. Any other staff announcements? Okay, Edri?
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Couple of things to cover. First off, we are nearly complete with our reconstruction project for all of our major streets, the 29 streets. We're down to four. So those four will take us to the end of October and then striping will begin and the project will be complete. So just wanted to give an update on that. You probably, if you drive down Del Monte, you'll see Mortimer is currently being worked on this week. Engine Parkway is, the transition from phase three was great. We didn't have any big issues. We do have a major closure on the roadway this coming Thursday, so please visit the website. You'll see what that closure is and the time restrictions and the direction of the restrictions. Please visit engineparkway.com for more information on that. Finally, I just wanted to tell the council, we're going to have a special presentation next meeting, so on the seventh, with our contract traffic engineer to share with the council and the public how to drive these two lane roundabouts. We'll have a presentation, a lot of videos, we'll have handouts and more information on how to do that to come. So thank you for your time.
All right, Edri, quick question. Zeneta, north to Carmel Avenue. When will that be finished? It was part of this year's project, but yet not yet finished?
Sure, yeah. We needed to remove some lead based paint on the, or thermoplastic on the roadway. And we had to do that in a careful environmental way. Zeneta is currently planned for the end of October, October 20th.
Thank you. Any other questions for Edri? Good work, Edri and all those people like Monterey County Engineering on Engine Parkway. Mayor Pro Tem Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one addition to Edri's great presentation. For the next couple of months, the roundabouts, the four roundabouts on Engine Parkway will have only one lane. And in the final, when it's completed, there will be two lanes on each roundabout. So I tell people, if you're uncomfortable driving roundabouts, this is your chance. Go practice on Engine Parkway, with only one. No, really, it's, it's, it's good for people to learn. And you don't have to worry yet about other cars in the, well, you have to worry about cars, but anyway, only in one lane. So this is your chance. And there's a movie on that website that Edri mentioned, engineparkway.com. There's a short movie about how the rules of the roundabout, how to drive a roundabout. So that was my addition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Edri, you had your hand up?
I have, sorry, I did. Thank you, Councilmembers and Fisher. You reminded me of the final thing I wanted to let the council know. It's not going to affect a lot of people in central Marina, but definitely in southern Marina, most likely a lot of CSU MB students. As part of the project, PG&E has a major upgrade of their electrical system on Engine Parkway. So for one day in October, we don't have that date yet, but as soon as PG&E provides that date, we'll we'll let you know, probably by the October 7th meeting. Power will be out for most of southern Fort Ord and a section of the project for about 12 hours. We've been coordinating with PG&E to make sure that all the necessary people are notified. They're working on that map. We'll have that map for you at the October 7th meeting. But just to let you know, sometime in the beginning of October, we're going to have one day and it's going to be a nighttime shut off. It'll be for a 12 hour period. And that's for PG&E to relocate some of their utilities and upgrade them to help prevent further blackouts in the future.
Edri, you said southern Fort Ord. Did you mean southern Marina?
Yes, the southern Marina that's within former Fort Ord. So the Gray Star area, we don't think that Preston Park is going to be impacted, but definitely Schoonover will be impacted and other parts of CSU MB.
All right. Thank you, Edri. Okay, now we'll move on to other comment on our consent agenda and also public comment on other matters that are on your mind that are not on our agenda. So consent agenda or other matters. We'll start public comment now. Councilmember Biala is going to step down to change hats to become a member of the public. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. My name is Kathy Biala and I speak as a member of Asian Communities of Marina or ACOM. A recentchange.org petition titled Protect Lockpatten Park, Preserve Marina's Coastal Heritage was presented as proof of opposition to development, yet it never defined which projects it opposed. No one is proposing McDonald's or a hotel, only passive recreational gardens. The petition makes no distinctions. It also falsely claims the park is deed restricted for coastal preservation. Lot number 43, where the Asian American garden is proposed, has no such restriction. In fact, Lockpatten Park already includes a library, a parking lot, playground, the MLK Junior statue and garden, fruit trees and community beds, all non-native features. To single out the Asian American garden as inappropriate is arbitrary and biased. The city of Marina has voted unanimously to support the garden at Lockpatten Park. The garden at Lockpatten Park has also been endorsed by ACOM, C4SM or Sustainable Marina, and its parent organization, CSMC Communities for Sustainable Monterey County and Sierra Club Ventana Chapter. The city allocated $250,000 more than two years ago. Sierra Club recently pledged $100,000. Finally, the petition questions whether I face a conflict of interest because I serve on city council, the Sierra Club Executive Committee, and as ACOM president. The city attorney has confirmed that this is, does not represent a conflict of interest in and of itself. As council member, I receive no money from either organization, nor is there any ACOM contractual relationship with the city. If an agenda item involving ACOM or the Sierra Club comes before this council, the city attorney will review it for potential conflict at that time. This petition is misleading, inaccurate, and unfairly targets projects that celebrates Marina's diversity and our growing community. Thank you. And please enter my comments and the fullchange.org survey into the public record and I have hard copies for our city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Would anyone else in the room like to make a comment?
I'll start my humble and benevolent reign. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Steve Lee. I'm a resident of Marina and represent Sustainable Marina. I also represent the Board of Directors of Communities for Sustainable Monterey County. I'm here supporting, sorry, I'm here to support the Asian American garden in Lockpatten Park. Over the course of this debate, I do not think it is clear where within Lockpatten Park this garden will be located. It struck me that some of the visualizations make the garden appear to cover a larger area than is proposed. Although no final design has been presented, there has been a concept plan provided by the Asian Community of Marina. This places the garden south of the existing Oak Woodland Community Garden. I produced an image based on Google Earth that shows where this garden is proposed. As you can see, this garden will be constructed in an area of approximately one and a half acres. This area is bounded by the Oak Woodland Gardens, the north, the line of cypress trees to the west, and the decomposed granite path to the east and south. The proposed area is in the dry upland part of the park. This area is within the southern part of Lot 43, which was purchased by the Park District in 2004. The northern part of this lot now includes the MLK Statue Plaza and Oak Woodland Community Garden, also shown on this map. I'm not aware of any attempt to maintain or improve this part of the lot since it was purchased, although satellite images over the years show that it has been mowed at regular intervals. Currently, it consists mainly of ice plant and other invasive weeds such as sheep sorrel, mustards, and non-native grasses. The proposed garden area is clearly separated from the wetland part of the park by the DG path. Development of the garden should have no effect on any future improvements or rehabilitation of the lake and wetlands. Lockpatten Park is an urban public park. Parts have already been developed, such as the library, the children's playground, the MLK Plaza, and the community garden. Previous unadopted plans have called for other facilities to be built in the park. There's great public demand for the wetland area to be, for want of a better word, landscaped for improved visibility and safety. That is something that I personally support. Also, the three and a half acre mitigation area to the west of the Cypress and south of the library provides ample space for presenting our coastal heritage, as was its original intention. This weedy patch does not need to be restored to pristine wilderness, but should be sensitively developed for everybody to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Would anyone else like to speak who is here personally?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city officials, guests, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joy Pasadella and I am a longtime resident of Marina. More than two years ago, in the council budget planning, funding for the Asian American garden was established and this year was prioritized in the budget. Last year, on July 2, 2024, the council also voted to communicate support to the Regional Park District for locating the garden in Lockpatten Park, Lot Number 43, which is owned by the district. Since then, there have been nine public meetings, open sessions, closed sessions, and one joint meeting of the council and Regional Park District, where the garden in Lockpatten Park were discussed, which ACOM members have faithfully attended every one of them. Despite this, through process, some opponents now claim the garden should not be built in Lockpatten Park due to natural habitat concerns. These objections do not apply to Lot Number 43, that has long been covered in invasive, non-native weeds. The garden is a passive recreational project that complements the oak woodland walking paths. It could be a cultural gem for Marina, celebrating diversity alongside the Martin Luther King Jr. statue. Opponents have suggested alternative sites, but none are appropriate. Opponents have suggested alternative sites, but none are appropriate. Vince de Maggio Park must be reserved for large community events such as car show, Christmas tree lighting and multicultural festival, as well as being needed for potential civic facilities required of Marina's growing population. The Cypress Knolls property, another suggested site, may be five years or more from development, while the garden process has already taken over three years to reach this stage. Claims that the process has been rushed or not transparent are simply not true. Across California and in nearly every state in the country, public Japanese or Asian-inspired gardens are trusted. The Shinsen Garden in Fresno, for example, is the city's number two tourist attraction. In Saratoga, a much smaller city than Marina, has the beautiful hillside Hakone Japanese garden. With Marina's unique and significant Asian population, we are dismayed.
I'm sorry, Joy. I have to ask you to stop because your time is up.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for stopping you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. My name is Lynn Mao and I am a longtime resident of Marina. The change.org petition circulating on social media uses lofty but misleading language to argue against the Asian American garden in Lockpatten Park. But nowhere in the survey do they specifically identify what projects they are referring to. It describes the park as a living reminder of Marina's coastal heritage and a sanctuary for wildlife and residents alike, urging protection for future generations. Those words may sound appealing, but they ignore the facts. People voted for this petition, voted based on not knowing that a passive Asian American garden is one of those projects. Nowhere does the petition mention the large public library, parking lot and playground that already are built in the park with support from some of the very people who now oppose the Asian American garden in the same Lockpatten Park. Nowhere does it say the park once housed a radio tower and nowhere does it admit that this land was never pristine habitat. It was farmland with farm structures on it. And the two acre slope proposed for the Asian American garden has been covered in invasive weeds for over a decade. Marina's unique. Nearly one-third of our population is Asian, Pacific Islander or of mixed Asian heritage. This is part of our history shaped by the presence of Fort Ord Military Base and this community deserves recognition and visibility. The Asian American garden is not a threat to Lockpatten Park is a chance to celebrate Marina's diversity, honor our community's heritage and create a legacy project for future generations. The petition's rhetoric only distracts from that goal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Come on up if you would.
Hi, my name is Jill Van Der Speck and I'm a resident of Marina. I was very interested in recent polls posted by Peter Le on Nextdoor and Facebook. These polls asked, where do you prefer the new Asian American garden? In Lockpatten Park or Vince de Maggio Park? And as a side note here, Mr. Le had invented a new and different name in his polls for this Asian American garden. Mr. Le supports moving this tranquility garden to the Vince de Maggio Park, a park owned by the city and used annually for some major and busy events. By contrast, Lockpatten is already a community location containing the Marina Library with the MLK statue, the children's playground, the oak woodland with the food forests and the proposed Asian American garden and sensory garden. Mr. Le's polls were suddenly closed, likely because the results were going the wrong way. They appeared to show clear community support for Lockpatten. In all three polls, a consistent two-thirds favored Lockpatten over de Maggio. And after the original intent of these polls had failed, suddenly a change.org signature list showed up, now explicitly advocating de Maggio. It seems to have been a move out of despair because it is common knowledge that such lists are meaningless, simply because contrary to a poll, the other party does not get a voice in the mayor's signature list. It is disappointing that a few opponents try to portray the Lockpatten Park site as inappropriate when, over the past year, countless public comments have supported it at that location, at the Lockpatten location. The city council has already voted unanimously for the Asian American garden at Lot 43 and many cities in Monterey County would welcome an Asian garden, a place of peace, meditation and appreciation of nature. What is happening in Marina? This debate is not truly about preserving natural habitat. Those ideals were abandoned long ago when the library, playgrounds and parking lot were built. We are now in a hypocritical situation with opposers claiming to protect natural habitat, the very same people who previously promoted the library in the park. Today, Lockpatten Park is a welcoming community center that celebrates education, nature and Marina's unique racial diversity. The Marina community overwhelmingly wants the Asian American garden and wants that Lockpatten. So thank you very much. I would like to have this entered in the public record.
Thank you, Julius.
Good evening, Mayor and council people. My name is May Dungu. So a group of Asian, um, a group of ACOM people represented by different ethnic groups went to the office of Jimmy Panetta to request for a help for the Asian American garden and he replied to us with this letter. So I'm just going to read you the letter. It is written for the Regional Park. Mr. Eric Morgan, General Manager, Kevin Raskoff, Chair and Board Member. Dear Mr. Morgan and Mr. Raskoff, I write in strong support of the creation of the Asian American garden in Marina. This project will benefit the community by creating more opportunity for passive recreation and expanding access to outdoor space. The Asian American garden is expected to include feature commonly found in Asian-inspired landscape. This may include water element, stones and rocks that represent balance and duality, yin and yang, the traditional structures such as tea house and bridges. In addition to offering recreational benefit, the garden will honor the generations of Asian American family who have shaped the cultural, economic and social life of Marina and the surrounding region. It will provide a space for education, reflection and celebration of Asian American heritage, helping the community gain a deeper understanding and appreciation of its diversity. As a community with a strong Asian American history, Marina will be well-served by this project. I urge you to give the Asian American garden your full consideration. Thank you for your time and attention to this important matter. If you need additional information or would like to discuss my support further, please contact my office. Sincerely, Jimmy Panetta, U.S. Representative, 19th Congressional District, California. Please include this in the public records. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, May. Okay, next.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is David Brown. I'm a 30-year Marina resident and a former member of this city council. And I would like to address the change.org petition. I'm speaking, of course, in favor of having the Asian garden put in Lockpatten Park where it belongs. So the online petition has some unusual reading. It says the city should pause all advancement of these projects until a full transparent review is conducted by, and then they list a number of agencies. I'll get back to that in a moment. And the public has had meaningful opportunities for input. Further, that these entities consider previous development carefully and consider removal of any projects not aligned with these principles. I had to read that two, maybe three times, not because I'm a slow reader, but because I couldn't believe, well, I couldn't believe the idiocy of such a statement. So whoever drafted this petition, the people who signed it, they want to consider removal of, what? The library? The Martin Luther King Memorial? The child's playground? Well, they don't actually say that, but if you take, if you read this literally, it doesn't make sense. Now, moving on. The agencies that they want to run this by include Fish and Wildlife, Coastal Conservancy and the Coastal Commission. Well, why? Those are not the agencies, as I'm sure you all well know, that are involved in a typical environmental review under a sequel of California Environmental Quality Act. And it results after in-depth studies by staff and more in either a recommendation, well, of that there be an environmental impact report because there may be substantial environmental harm or on the other hand, what is probably going to happen here, a negative declaration to the extent that it doesn't involve substantial environmental harm. That's the process. And my points are here that the people who drafted this have not really thought this out. In any event, I urge you, I don't understand and I don't think you do either, the real motives behind this. And I would urge you to see the double standards and inaccuracies being applied here and don't give credit to such arguments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. Sorry to cut you off.
Good evening. My name is Iris Laktaua Nani. I'm here tonight to support the completion of Marina's Asian American garden. My family immigrated to California back in 1967, living in Fairfield where my father worked at Travis Air Force Base. We moved here to Marina in 1970, living over on Melanie Road. My siblings and I attended Olson, Marina Vista and Los Arboles schools. We all went to Seaside High School. Growing up in the 70s here, Marina was wonderful. We never felt any indifferent and we always felt living here Marina as an Asian Filipino was normal. We never felt like we were, you know, being racist against. As a longtime resident of Marina and Seaside, the entire community would benefit from a great icon such as the garden because of the important contributions our Asian community members brought to the history of City of Marina. One of my best friends in junior high school was Sue Oi. Her father was one of the first, if not the first, mayor of Marina. In fact, out of the several Asian mayors in Marina, weren't there, there were two Asians. Both of them were Japanese, the Honorable Mr. Robert Oi and Mr. George Takahashi. And it seems like, Mr. Mayor, you've been a mayor here for almost 20 years. Is that true? I was looking up the history and I'm like, oh my gosh, there was only eight mayors. And you're like, 20 years in running now? Is that true? I didn't know that. So anyways, here's another fun fact. The individual that incorporated Marina as a city back in 1975 was also Asian. She was Chinese. The Honorable March Fong Yu, former California Secretary of State and Ambassador to the Federated States of Micronesia. Just these three individuals of Asian descent I mentioned contributed greatly to the city of Marina. Don't you agree? Asian and Pacific Island Americans consist of East Asians, South Asians, Southeast Asians and Pacific Islanders, over half of the world's population. That's pretty big. I mean, to have that kind of, you know, presence in the Asian community. There's, there's over half of this world. The city was visually diverse in that Marina is truly rich in multicultural diversity. I think as retiree, I am now active in the Marina community and participate in community projects as much as possible. I think there should be no reason not to build this garden. It will only enhance our city and give back through the beauty of a garden, honoring the Asian American community's significant historical contributions to the ever-changing city of Marina. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. And a little fact check, 17 years as mayor and four years on city council. Would anyone else like to speak tonight to this matter or to your thoughts on the consent agenda or anything else that's on your mind tonight that's not on the agenda?
First of all, thank you, mayors and city council. On a side note, I wanted to thank you for getting some pickleball courts in Sea Haven. I saw that. So we're very excited being a Sea Haven homeowner. Lockpatten Park offers a wonderful opportunity for our community to embrace both cultural celebration and civic enrichment by establishing an Asian garden there, a living green space that can bridge cultures, heal historical silences and enhance our collective well-being. Marina is a deeply diverse city. According to the 2020 U.S. Census, roughly 18.9% of Marina population identifies as Asian, with another large portion identifying as Hispanic or Latino, 32.2 and 37.8 white and multiracial or from other racial groups. So no one racial or ethnic group holds an overwhelming majority. There are also substantial numbers of foreign-based residents, over 20%. Many speaking languages and heritage traditions from Asia. Because of this diversity, an Asian garden would be more than a botanical showpiece. It would be a space for inclusion, education and cross-cultural exchange. It could host plants native to various Asian countries, serve as a venue for community events, festivals, dances, food sharing and offer educational programming in poetry, culture, ecology and cultural traditions. It could also help address community needs. Many Marina, especially those without large private yards, have already expressed desire for more green communal spaces as seen in the existing garden efforts. Lockpatten Park is strategic site for this. It's certainly located, accessible and already valued as a public space. Integrating an Asian garden there would leverage existing park infrastructure, bring in more foot traffic and encourage stewardship from diverse groups. It would help strengthen social cohesion and giving Asian and immigrant communities visible representation and an honored place in the landscape of Marina. It could also attract tourism, educational partnerships. Schools could take students for study or botany or geography and enhance environmental benefits like habitat for pollinators, shade, air quality and community health. In summary, given Marina's demonstrated ethnic diversity, the presence of people whose heritage includes many Asian countries, Lockpatten Park should proceed. It was only beautiful, but also invite connection, honor, diversity, foster learning and build a strong, more inclusive community. Thank you.
Thank you, LPDO, and for your pickleball leadership. Anyone else wishing to speak tonight?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Hoover. Lockpatten Park is an environmental treasure in the heart of Marina. For years, individuals, families, students, For years, individuals, families, students, gardeners, birders, and advocates for native species, Marina residents and non-residents alike have poured thousands of volunteer hours into its care. Together, we have stewarded this land for responsible, accessible use. Lockpatten is a shining example of community-rooted infrastructure. It houses the Marina Public Library, a large parking lot, a children's playground, an amphitheater, and the Martin Luther King Jr. Statue and Reflection Space. It is also home to coastal live oaks and oak woodland demonstration project and wetlands that support important bird habitat. Yet, Lockpatten is not a pristine untouched site. It is a community space shaped by human use and vision. That vision was laid out in the city's 2005 master plan, which imagined recreational and cultural amenities, including our current library, volleyball and bocce courts, a small pond, a stream, a lake, pedestrian footbridges, benches, lighting, picnic areas, an informal stage, and landscaped natural areas. Lockpatten was always intended to balance habitat with active diverse uses. The proposed Asian American Garden fits well within this vision. Designed as a passive educational space with native and non-native plants, the Asian American Garden would add both environmental diversity and cultural vitality to the site. It would draw a wider community of visitors and volunteers while also benefiting small businesses downtown through increased foot traffic. We are at a crossroads with many different perspectives about the future of Lockpatten Park, and we have an opportunity to continue to steward and transform the park for the future. Like Golden Gate Park in San Francisco, Lockpatten can thrive with multiple uses grounded in stewardship and accessible to all. Restricting the park to a rigid definition of use risks stagnation. I hope that going forward, we can all lean into community, listening, respecting, and accommodating multiple uses and perspectives. Like a gemstone with many facets, Lockpatten shines brightest when reflecting its full diversity. The proposed Asian American Garden will not compromise the park's integrity. Rather, it will strengthen it and keep Lockpatten Park vibrant and beloved for generations to come. I urge you to support the Asian American Garden as an addition to Lockpatten Park. Please enter my comments into the public record. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else in the room like to comment on the consent agenda? Or anything else that's on your mind? All right, let's check in with people remote. Denise Turley, good evening.
Good evening. Mine's simple. I would like to request, to request a change to the meeting notes of the September 3, 2025 meeting, specific item 13B, which was pulled from the consent agenda and sent to the action agenda. The notes erroneously state that no public comment was received when in fact Ms. Vischer specifically said in her statement, no comment would be allowed. That's two completely different things. Second item is, are, are they, is there a physical amendment since that item passed to the city budget? And could I get a copy of that amendment by email? Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. We'll give everyone online a moment to raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Not seeing anyone, we'll close public comment. And Lane, can you get back to Denise on her question? Okay. All right, Denise, our city manager will get back to you or have staff get back to you to answer your question. All right, so now we move on to our consent agenda. And I'll open it up to the council members. Any brief comments, questions, or wish to pull something for a deeper discussion? And for those of you in the audience, you're welcome to go. You're welcome to stay. We thank you for being here tonight. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to synthesize Denise's comments real quickly, but is there, is there a chance to move that? Does staff agree that maybe that was misrepresented in the minutes a little bit?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
We'll double check that.
Okay. So I don't want to pull anything else. I would make a motion to approve with the exception of those comments. And then I would just make the brief comment that I think that as a council and also for the city attorney, I think our rules are silent on how we conduct public comment on things that are polled. I could be wrong, but if that's the case, I would like to see this council err on the side of more public comment, not less. So if we're going to pull an item, I'd like to see us give the public an opportunity to speak on that item. Unless our rules specifically state that it shouldn't be that way.
City attorney?
Yeah, I don't think our rules speak to that issue. I know the practice is, you know, you provide public comment to items on the consent agenda, which we just, you know, went through. And so providing public comment again would be at the option of the council as a whole.
Thank you.
Just one other thing. I do plan to bring to council a item to consider potential amendments to the rules to clarify some of these questions that council has.
Thank you. And I'll just note that in order to try to streamline efficiency in our meetings, that is why I believe we voted unanimously to put the consent agenda comment opportunity under public comment so that when we decided, when we discussed it, it would be after public comment. So it would make meetings longer to make that change. But of course, it's up to our discretion to do so. Okay. Councilmember Biella?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to second, but I also, I can't find it, but I truly believe that I saw in writing that when we pull an agenda, it goes to the back of the agenda, I mean, of the poll agenda. So, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to second. And on discussion on that, our official practice is to move it to the end of the agenda. So it would be the last action item. But we oftentimes discuss it sooner because we either have consultants in the room or it's fresh on our mind, or for whatever reason, we have the discretion not to wait to the very end of the meeting. And I think part of the reason is sometimes we don't finish our agendas. So it would keep things coming back without conclusion where we always to put them at the end of the agenda. But that is our first resort, is that it goes to the end of the action agenda if it gets pulled from the consent. Okay. So the item that's being, that's not part of the motion, is it 10B2? Or is it 10B2? Okay. Mayor Protem Vischer and then Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you. Just a quick comment about this. I would like to apologize to Denise because she sent me an email with a question because I quickly consulted with our attorney when it was brought up. And the public already had had a chance to give public comments. So I said, no more public comments. And, but she did send me an email about it and I contacted staff and I was still waiting for staff to report back to me because I knew she would want to see documentation. And I overlooked, you know, I should have let her know I'm working on it or staff, our staff is working on it. So apologies to Denise and it will be, we will get more clarification from our attorney for future meetings. So thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Let's go to Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just in hearing your comments, it dawned on me that maybe a good compromise when the rules come back to us is that council, to be more efficient, signals to the public before public comment whether items are going to be pulled or not. Not, you know, and then they can choose to not to make their comments at that time. But when the, when the agenda item is held, because the reality is it's us five up here that make the meetings go late into the night, generally not the public. So I would just, maybe that's a good compromise for when the rules come back to us. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? So that motion passes unanimously with the five of us voting. And we will move on to two public hearings. And I need to excuse myself from the rest of the meeting because I'm going to drive to San Luis Obispo for a board meeting the next couple of days. And so Elizabeth, if you can take over for me?
Okay, our first public hearing, 11A. This one. This is, yeah, yeah. Okay. Open public hearing, consider introducing ordinance number something, amending section 17 dot 52 dot 020 of the Marina Municipal Code, removing the phrase male and female impersonators from the definition of adult cabaret, thereby removing this form of personal and cultural expression from the uses regulated by the adult businesses and massage therapists section of the MMC. The proposed ordinance adoption is exempt from. Okay, so we have our senior planning, no, planning manager. Allison, yeah. Yes. So welcome. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and members of the council. I'm Allison Hunter, Planning Manager for the City of Marina. That was pretty much my presentation, so.
Yeah, you're done. You can.
This is very short and sweet, like you mentioned in the introduction. On July 1st, the council brought up the notion of removing the words male and female impersonators from the municipal code, section 1752020, for a variety of reasons. The discussion on the dais was supported by the full council. So staff took this to Planning Commission for a minor amendment to that code section. The Planning Commission at a regularly noticed public hearing on August 28th affirmed and made a recommendation of approval to the city council. So if your council chooses to approve this proposed amendment, we will move forward and amend the municipal code so that those words are removed from that section of the code, allowing male and female impersonation to be carried out as just a standard form of expression as is commonly experienced these days. And that concludes my very brief but important staff report.
Thank you very much. Let's open it up to public comments. Is anybody in the room who would like to speak on this item? Or anybody on Zoom? If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to speak on this item. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Council, I don't see any requests. Oh, councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just real briefly, I know that updating our city code is sometimes labor intensive. It's probably not the highest on your priority list in this very, very busy city of ours. And frankly, for council and the public, sometimes it's uncomfortable to revisit language that have been on the books for years. Removing these outdated references, though, are sending a clear message. Our city recognizes changing times and we're committed to keeping laws fair, relevant, and respectful. And with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, not to end debate, but just to make the motion.
I'm happy to second that.
No more comments. Anita, can we? Oh, no, it is no call. Anybody in favor? Oh, no, it's a coordinator.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Biella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vischer?
Yes. That motion passes. You were faster than you thought, huh? Something. This takes us to item 11B, the next public hearing. And we will receive an informational presentation on a development impact fee nexus study. And who will lead us?
Tori will introduce, and then Frederick is here.
I see Tori Hana here, our financial director.
Good evening. The item that we have before you is to receive the presentation of the development impact fee study, as well as open a public hearing, consider adopting the study and introducing the reading of an ordinance. The update that we have this evening reevaluates the 2016 development impact study, incorporates projects from the city's capital improvement plan and recommends additional projects. One thing you'll note if, in looking at some of the support is that there's been a change in legislation that changes the methods of calculating fees on development projects for residential developments, including changing from a flat rate to a square footage basis. Tonight, we have with us Frederick Benter and Maho Champaneri online from Kimley Horn and Benjamin Sigmund from Economic and Planning Systems. And they'll provide an overview of the report as well as more details on the legislative changes.
Thank you, Tori. Good evening, councilmembers. It's good to be back. Ben and I got a tag team a little bit on this one. You know, traffic impact fees are sort of good news, bad news, because the good news is we're going to try to build some future infrastructure. The bad news is the fees always go up, right? So. Okay. There we go. So like Tori mentioned, the biggest change here is this new legislative requirement about how we do these. You know, I don't know if you've heard, there's been a court case in Sacramento and there's a lot more scrutiny on how cities actually collect fees. And there has to be a very clear nexus indicated in the analysis that we do. And cities can only collect for the nexus that is really established. That nexus is the need for infrastructure because of future growth in the city. In the good old days, you know, we would always do a level service analysis and say this intersection fails, let's put it in a fee program. Developers, you help pay for it. Now, if it's a low service F, the city needs to pick up basically the cost to get it back to a normal level of service and the future development only pays their fair share. So that's the sort of the bad news about this. You know, and we'll talk about that later on. We're going to give a little bit of purpose, background, and then get to the fee proposed, a comparison of the old fees and the new fees. So AB 1600 has also always been there to do fee calculations. There's four bullets really is like, is about how do we legally justify, transparent, and use the appropriate measures to do an access analysis? The relationship between the fee use and the new development. So you can only use the fees collected for that development, not for anything else. The relationship between the facility need and the new development. So you need to show that the new development will cause a deficiency, right? And then you go and say, okay, well, we need this. This is how we're going to apply the fees. And then the fee level and the facility cost. And that has to do where you do a fair share calculation of what proportion of that fee is actually attributable to new development. AB 602 is the new one, and that's what I call the, really the cities, that's a nasty one for cities in the future, right? And that's the one that came about because of that court case in Sacramento County, you know, where the court said, hey, you have to approve your nexus. So now we need to determine the existing and future. And we put the LOS, but it's called a little LOS. And what it means that everything that you do needs to be proven. You can devise a methodology to show what is the level of service is, if it's failing, and if you need it in the future, right? So for vehicle trips and intersections, we still use the old school level of service, A, B, C, D, E, where we look at congestion. But for safety, we actually look at pedestrian and bicycle level of service stress. And there's a methodology we've applied there. For all the other project facilities, Ben can talk a little bit about how we apply those as well. We need to identify the proposed improvement and explain why it's needed. So that's what we do in this report. Fees for residential units must consider square footage. So I have to share with you, this is, we really will have a breakdown and there's a fee table in your, in your item. I think it's appendix A or table A, which has the breakdown. And we did it for single-family units because we have good data from the American Household Survey, which says so many people live in this size of residential unit, but there's no data available for multifamily units. So for multifamily units like apartments, we did not do the breakdown. We still keep it at dwelling units. It's also a little bit of a factor of, if you think about an apartment complex or a senior center, right? There's a lot of space that is community space, you know, eating facility, elevator lobbies. There's a lot of space that is community space, you know, eating facility, elevator lobbies, and community facilities. So when ITE does trip generation, they don't break it down per square feet per unit. They give you the entire square feet for that actual building. If you have eighty units, right, it will be the entire square feet for that whole building. So that's why we cannot really break it down for trip generation purposes to a per-unit rate. Or sorry, per square foot rate. And then the other thing that's changed is the time period for updating the fees is now between five, it went from five to eight years, right? So you can still update it in between. Usually cities do that when there's a big change in another specific plan coming in or the units change, right? So you have that option, but typically now it's going to be every eight years. So the purpose of the fee is to look at revision at the impact fees, revise the capital improvement projects for all the improvements that we need in the future, and these are not just transportation. A lot of the other ones, public facilities, parks, and safety and security. We need to have to prepare this Nexus Study Report. And then the program reflects the planned growth that we have, and it determines fair share costs as we go through the process. And something is skipping, sorry. Okay, let's stay on this one, background. So the previous fee update was in 2016, right? So it actually has a base, I think, 2008. So what you've been doing is just update that with annual updates of the ENR rates that you increase the fees by. We've updated the project list, and we have over thirty facilities that Ben will talk about, totaling about $230 million in improvements that we've identified in this. And we have actually twenty-six transportation projects, but we've only allocated twenty-four of them for the fee program. We believe that the other two can actually be extended to a later date. So when you do future updates and the need is there, you can include those in the fee program. And the main reason for that is just to get the cost down a bit, right? So transportation costs about $179 million. So a total of $410 million in traffic impact fees. Next slide.
Good evening, council. Ben Segmond with Economic and Planning Systems. I took on the public facilities, parks, and public safety fees. I just want to share that we worked with your department's staff to establish the project list, understand what the improvement program would be, and to cost it out with them. There were some internal costs and costs coming through from architecture and planning firms, and then some reference to cost estimating manuals that we rely on. So we feel good that the order magnitude of the costs are good. And the list of programs here reflects the city's desires for the coming decades.
Great. And then next slide. There's intersections and roadways, so these show again the top projects, most expensive ones are obviously some interchange projects, and then just various projects throughout the city. Next slide, please. So this is a map that shows you all twenty-six projects' locations. So we have a bunch of intersections and some street segments, right? And we've also included in the program, you know, the consideration for the Del Monte corridor that you're thinking about doing the complete street principles on with the roundabouts and also reservation. However, we've only allocated thirty percent of the cost for those in this fee program to get the fees down a bit. Also, remember, there's a lot of existing traffic on these roads, so you wouldn't get a hundred percent of all the costs that you would allocate to it. And we've justified those in terms of not level of service for congestion, but in terms of safety. So we said, hey, these corridors are going to provide additional safety for pets and bikes, so we use a level of stress to help identify and include those in the fee program. Next slide, please. Ben?
Yeah. So this is just a graphic illustrating that we are attempting to closely tie the demand for public facilities from new development to the costs associated with their fair share. In a city that's just building on an existing stock of facilities, it's really easy. It's the sort of section on the left side where you simply have future demand that needs more, more facilities to service that population. Here, it's a little more complicated because we are going to redevelop some city facilities into brand-new city hall aquatics programs, et cetera. And so we just have to be cognizant that there is some existing deficiency that we're sort of playing catch-up, and we take great care to make sure that we're tying the demand from future development to their portion of these future facilities and the associated costs. So I'll just try to quickly walk you through the methodology for the public safety government buildings and parks fees. Everything's based on a service population, the residents and workers in the city who demand the various facilities. Parks, for example, the demand is really driven by residents. There's no charge for parks on commercial development. We establish a build-out, which we'll talk about in a minute, for the city in terms of population and employment down the road. So we have a growth forecast that we're using, and we establish from where we are today to that point in the future how much additional service population will be here in town. And that's how we establish the fair share, the growth component as relative to the overall built-out service population in the city. We tie everything to a per-resident or per-worker demand factor. And those are then tied to the facilities and the cost of the facilities to establish the component of the public facilities that would be attributable to growth. And then, as is required by new legislation that Frederick discussed, everything's broken down on the residential side to a per-square-foot metric. The idea behind that is simply that bigger homes, more population, more demand. So the state in that legislation is really just trying to create a closer tie between the size of a home and the demand for public facilities that it would generate.
So the transportation and fee calculations is usually based on daily trips, right? So it's slightly different from the facilities because it's not a population, it's the traffic that actually goes on the network. We identify the future growth and then the fair share of the citywide trip. So what that means is if a trip, so let's say people that drive from Salinas, right, and they drive through on M. Jim Park when they want to go to Monterey, right? You cannot collect fees for those trips, right? If, but anybody that has a trip that is originating in the city and it stays in the city, so the origin and the destination's in the city you can collect fees for. Any trip that originates in the city and leaves, you can collect a fee for. And any trip that comes, let's say I come from Salinas and I work in Marina, right? So the destination's in Marina, you can collect a fee for that. So we call it by internal, external trips. It's a whole balance, right? So in that, we determine in the fair share, right? So you cannot collect XX trips, right? Oops, can we go back? Establish capital improvement needs. So basically what we did, we then took the number of units, loaded in the model, see where we have failure of existing roadway facilities and intersections. Then we say, these are probably the intersections that we need to improve. We determine what these improvements are, determine the cost for that, and that becomes the capital improvement list for roadway and transportation projects. The future fee for this will be a fee based, the bottom line of it is a fee per trip, right? We convert it back to square feet for housing, single-family housing. But basically, everything else is going to be a fee per trip. We're also going to develop a little tool for every, that's going to make it easy. If somebody comes in and they say, hey, I want to do a ice cream shop, right? And then you can use that tool to help them calculate the fee because there's so many uses and you can't cover every single one. So we bring in what we can from ITE. Sometimes there are nuances to it as well. You know, for instance, you know, pass-by trips is what we call it, so a gas station. I mean, yes, it has a lot of traffic to it, but people are already on the road network, right? So you cannot double, then they probably come from the house, so you've charged the house already. You cannot charge them for full impact to the gas station, so some reductions that we apply. And then we basically do the cost calculation by land use based on these trip rates. And then, like I said, for the single-family homes with a cost per square foot, as is required now by AB six oh two. Next line. There we go. So the table at the top here shows the citywide future growth estimates that we've really worked on with staff. It's not full build-out of everything, especially the downtown is a little less. But I think Dunes and some of Marina Station and Seahaven are full build-out, right? And you will see Cypress Novels is not in here because it's not in the current general plan. So this is still the previous land use growth that you've had with some updates. So the totals for growth is at the bottom. You know, and then you can see at the, where at the bottom for population households, how much that increases by. So forty percent increase in population, forty-six percent in households, and fifty-four percent in employment based on these land use types that we've identified. This table shows the project costs versus the div cost for transportation. So the intersections, the total cost that we have, so if you upgrade all the intersections, you're going to spend $39 million. The eligible costs, so these are the ones that don't have the XX trips in them or have existing deficiencies that the city needs to fix first, gets you to a total of $27 million, right? So you can basically then include $27 million in your fee program, right? So you have a shortfall of thirty percent in your infrastructure. Did the same with roadways, much bigger infrastructure shortfall there. And then we show the total at the bottom with a like fifty-nine percent eligible cost that you can gather fees on. This calculation shows the costs, so we took the cost from the previous page, the cost that's eligible for the traffic impact fee. We added to that the three percent for, that's like administrative fees, you know, the city need to update it annually, make the changes, and there's a cost to that. So AB sixteen hundred allow you to do that. And then you have some fees in your bank account, right? So maybe the cat doesn't like fees either, right? Or maybe they do. So the total impact fee revenue, right, is then subtracted because you have that money already. And then we get a new subtotal of fees that you then will collect. That the total, that's a net amount that we do the calculation on to get to a fee per unit. You can see the growth in adjusted daily trips, right? That's forecasted as about forty-eight, forty-seven thousand trips, right?
I can speak to this briefly. So this is just showing the portion of the non-transportation capital facilities that would be allocated to growth. And so it varies a little bit, like I said, because the service populations are slightly different depending on which category. But we're in the range here of about thirty percent of the costs that we'd put to new growth with the city picking up the remainder, the seventy percent.
So this is the, so this is where we started adding up your facilities and transportation because in the end, the developer is going to come in and you're going to say, hey, pay this total fee, right, for your unit, and it's going to cover all the facilities plus the transportation as well. This is the current fee program that you have, and there's a lot of numbers here. I apologize, and we need to show you everything, but maybe I'll just stay at the top because that gives you a little bit of an idea and we can flip-flop between these. So you'll see currently for a single-family home, your total fee is around $28,000, right? Twenty-eight, five, one, nine in the top row. If I go to the next slide, it increases to thirty-eight, so it goes up from twenty-eight to thirty-eight. And even though the cost that we are going to implement is actually per square foot, right? We wanted to give you a comparison between one and the other, and this is for an average home size of 2,500 square feet. The senior homes and assisted living and multifamily, like I told you, you know, we still charge those per dwelling unit because we haven't had, there's no tools in the toolbox out there to tell us if you break it down, these are the number of people that live in a studio versus a two-bedroom or a one-bedroom apartment, right? So the average assumption for square feet is 1,100. And I think on the facility side, and then trip generation, like I told you, is based on a unit, but the total square feet for the development, not the actual unit itself, right? But Ben uses the square feet in his fee calculation, right? And go back again. I think that was the last slide. So that's the last slide with the fees on the last table. There's in your packet, there's an exhibit, I forgot if it's exhibit or it's appendix A, shows you the cost per thousand square feet, and that's actually how it's going to work.
Thank you both very much. And we'll first open it up to the public. Let's see, anybody in the room? We have one person on Zoom who would like to speak, Betsy Wilson. You have up to three minutes, Betsy. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, City Council. My name's Betsy Wilson. I work in real estate development, and I have comments on the traffic impact fee portion of these reports. Kimley Horn is a fantastic firm as far as doing traffic studies, but their interpretation of the AB six oh two and trying to step out of the per-square-footage requirement for multifamily housing, I do not think is going to withstand a challenge from a developer. And I work with numerous folks who are building apartments, and I fully expect that the city is going to get a challenge on this. So, you know, AB six oh two focused on reforming the way cities collect impact fees such that smaller, more affordable units are not unfairly penalized with higher costs. And the language requires that a local government use square footage as a metric or make several findings that square footage is not appropriate. The idea that, you know, the Institute of Traffic Engineers doesn't have data on this, I don't think is going to stand a test in terms of reasons why you can charge per unit. And if you actually do the math in that table, what I found is that what you are proposing to charge, the multifamily units, is equivalent to a 1,700-square-foot house. So you are unfairly charging multifamily units under these proposed traffic fees. If you just do a quick search online, you know, the average apartment size across the United States is around 950 square feet. So if you want to reduce that, you know, you might not get a challenge. You had another part of the presentation showed an assumption of an 1,100-square-foot apartment. I think that's big, but it's certainly less than the 1,700. So I would ask the council to seriously question and consider that per-unit charge. I do not think that you are going to withstand a challenge on that, and it does really penalize multifamily housing in complete contravenance to the intention of this law that you are trying to comply with by doing this Nexus Study. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to comment.
Thank you very much for your comments, Betsy. And if you have any additional questions or if you would like to get an answer on staff about this after the meeting, you can always email marina@cityofmarina.org. And we'll try to have the, first off, close public comments. I don't see anybody else with their hands up. So we'll close public comments. And it's probably Benjamin who wants to reply to this, or Frederick?
So, you know, it's quite, so I've explained to you that really it's about the number of trips, right? Traffic is not really that close to residential unit size, right, except for single-family homes. And we have a very small variation on apartments. Apartments vary from around 500 square feet, I think the commenter said 950, you know, and we have 1,100 as the average here in Marina. So, and the trips are not, if you have an 1,100-square-foot home, a single-family home versus an 1,100-foot apartment has substantially less, you know, the traffic is different between those. They are not apples-to-apples comparison. The trip making is different. That people that live in an apartment are renting, but the people in a, in a single-family home has more space. There may be more families. So there's just so many characteristics that come in. But you need to understand that the trip is the factor that determined the fee in this case, right? We did the 2,500 square feet that we did is, is we averaged it out, right? So and the homes go from around 1,100 square feet to almost 3,500 square feet. So there's a much bigger variation in, in single-family use sizes. And like I mentioned to you, the American Household Survey, which forms a database of, you know, how many people live in a house, and that's really the census data, it does not have data for apartments, right, for multifamily units, so we couldn't use that. So can you be challenged? I mean, we can always be challenged, but that's the explanation we're going to get, right? Lack of data and the fact that we're using trip generation, which is the national metric for determining traffic impacts for roadway infrastructure.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, any questions, remarks? I think we're all impressed with the, it was so interesting to read it, but I'm glad that there are experts who specialize in these calculations. But I'm glad that there are experts who specialize in these calculations. And I also was kind of shocked to see the 2,500 square foot as an average home now. Because I thought that seemed large to me. But I know we have developments with, with extremely hard, large homes now. So that probably caused that, but it's probably on the high end, I hope. I hope in reality, it's a little bit, well.
Yeah, the trends we see everywhere right now is for smaller homes, right? So we got 11, maybe 700, 7,100 square feet, smaller sizes, what, what the public can afford.
Yes. But thank you. Like I said, I thought it was very interesting. But I'm glad it's not my, my field. Okay, council member Biella.
Yes, thank you. It's highly technical. I'm trying to think, how do you guys, like, what, what, are you statisticians? Or like, do you like all, all this kind of stuff? It's pretty impressive. But it gives me the sense that it's very complex and it's very detailed and it's very comprehensive. I mean, impact fees are not simple, like, just, well, I think it's about this much or this was going to. I mean, what, what you have presented is beyond imagination to me. I just have not, never thought of it in this way. So when the, the previous speaker was saying that you could be challenged, who would challenge you, a developer or is that who? And do they do that regularly on these kinds of things?
We don't see it regularly, but it does happen, right? And that's how AB 602 came about because developers challenged the fee programs that were levied by, you know, Sacramento County.
Right, but that passed, right? That's law now, so you can't challenge it. It's just.
It's, it's really developers, right? They are the ones, because they are the ones paying the fees, right? So, you know, and that's, that's the other reason why there's so many numbers and so much detail in this, right? Because we have to key and illustrate the nexus. That is the, that's the legislative requirement.
Right. Now, the way you organize the data and the decisions that you make, if, if there was another company, could they do an entirely different methodology? Or is this pretty constricted and regulated? Okay, alrighty. Okay, thank you very much.
City attorney would like to add something.
I was just going to say, if anybody was going to challenge, they would challenge it sort of as, you know, the, the city has sort of exceeded what could, what's sort of like a Fifth Amendment, right? Where there's a fee that sort of exceeds, you know, just compensation, like we're taking someone's property, right? So that would be the theory. That's how they would bring this up, as well as whether or not we comply with any requirements. So, but typically it would be a developer who, you know, did not want to pay those fees.
Councilman McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. First, thank you to Ms. Wilson for speaking because this is super technical and difficult to understand. So we often rely, right, on this public hearing process and people to come forward and bring their questions forward. I will say this is an ordinance, so this is not our last bite at the apple, as, as the mayor often says. So I encourage members of the public to send us, including Ms. Wilson, additional information that we can read and review before it comes back to us. And with that, I do want to make a motion that we receive the informational presentation on the development impact fee Nexus study, adopt the development impact fee Nexus study, and open the public hearing, take testimony from the public, consider introducing the ordinance, amending chapter 3.26 of the Marina Municipal Code regarding mitigation fees for new development within the city of Marina.
A second.
Thank you. And council member McAdams?
I'm good. I was going to.
Oh, you would like to make a motion? Okay, Anita, can we please get a roll call?
Councilmember McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilmember McAdams?
Hi.
Councilmember Biella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fisher?
Yes. So the motion passes unanimously. Thank you both again very much for being here, for your presentation, and for all the work you did. Thank you. This takes us to item 14, council and staff informational reports. We don't have our mayor here. Council members, anything to report on meetings and conferences attended? No, it looks like we're not active. Okay, then we'll adjourn this meeting at... Wait a minute, is that really eight? Eight thirty-two? I won't.
I think we should just hang out here till like for another two hours at least, because I don't.